Hello.
Hello.
Good morning.
Morning, Jack.
Good morning. Can you hear us? Can you hear Bill? Bill, you're muted. That's probably why.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
I can hear you, Bill.
Okay, good. Steve, are you on? I don't know if we have Steve on yet. Yeah, I saw Steve pop up there then. Jack, I can see you. Good to have you always on board. Ted? You on with us? See Mike Fincher, Cassie, um...
I'm here.
Heavy, low. Steve, are you on now? Chris D'Amico?
I am.
Okay, wonderful. Well, I think we're all ready to go. So, it is now nine oh eight and I'd like to call this meeting of the Carroll County Commissioners for the first meeting of June, which is on June the first, call it to order. And as always, we should begin with our pledge of allegiance. So, I'm gonna stand here and start it out. If you join with me, I'd appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I do.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, is liberty and justice for all. I'm seeing on here that for the Health Department, we have one that's labeled Joyce Yoder because they're using their computer, but unfortunately, our health nurse Joyce Yoder was involved in an auto accident over the weekend and cannot be with us today. She is. I guess she had some knee injury, but she is hopefully gonna be able to heal up this far. The first order of business that we have is approval of the minutes of the May eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Have you had an opportunity to look them over, both of you, Steve and Lauren?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Steve makes a motion and Lauren seconds. So, I would call for a vote. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Now, we have a whole string of claims here, and I like the way that Beth has done them now with everything broken out. And we have been, for the sake of brevity, moving through these with one motion, but I have noticed that the council is moving through some of theirs with one motion like that, and it's all canned thing and done ahead of time, and I don't think it's given the opportunity to the people to know what's really going on. So, I would ask my fellow commissioners that we just move down through these one at a time. I'm sorry, it's gonna take a little longer, but if anybody has a question they wanna ask about them, this would give them the opportunity. Our first up is the approval of payroll claims for the date of five sixteen twenty twenty in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Could I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay.
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Now, before we vote, is there any question on it? Anyone? Okay. I think I've given enough time to push buttons and get on everybody, so then I'd call for a vote. All in favor of payment of these payroll claims for two hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Approval of early claims in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Any questions? Okay, I'd call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passed. Approve of vent to necks claims. Now, vent to necks claims are payroll, or no, they're health insurance claims that we're paying, in the amount of ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any discussion over this? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion is passed. Approval of county general claims in the amount of, excuse me, one hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
So moved.
Steve?
And a second.
Lauren seconds. Any questions about those county general claims?
No.
I'd call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passed. County highway claims in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred six dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions about that from anyone? Call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Approve other funds claims in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents.
So moved.
I will second.
Motion and second. Any questions about this? I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Lauren said aye. Motion passed. Approval of lit June settlement in the amount of four hundred sixty thousand, forty-six dollars and nine cents.
So moved.
I will second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, and I'll ask for discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments? Call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Approve wheel and surtax January twenty twenty in the amount of seventy-five thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So moved.
I will second that.
Motion and second. Any discussion of this? Questions? Call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lauren, did you aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Another one, approval of wheel and surtax for February twenty twenty in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Call for discussion. Any discussion or questions? And call for a vote. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Oof wheel and surtax for March of twenty twenty in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, aye, motion passed. Approval of advanced draws in the amount of two million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand, eighty-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
I guess I don't know what that is.
Okay. Beth? Beth, I'm not hearing you come through the computer. I hear you from the other room.
She's muted. There you go.
The advanced draws are advanced draws to the three schools of Carroll, Delphi, and Rossville. They asked for money for the settlement, so those were three schools that were paid the money.
Oh, okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. And again, this is for the three, three of the four school corporations that we collect tax for. Discussion, questions besides Steve's? Good question. Okay, then call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Now, we're down to AIC agreement for, on the agenda with budget for technical assistance. Beth, is this for?
Has been approved by the council. The funding is there according to the council. This is what we had Jackie Clements from the AIC help with, the council with the project.
Okay.
This is Ted.
Beth?
Beth sent me the document, and it's their standard agreement, and I've reviewed it, and it's okay.
Okay, so I have that agreement in here. When we do this in-house, when we're having a regular meeting, while we sign all these claim dockets as we're going along, but we went a little faster today because I didn't have to pass papers out. I'll sign them, and then later the other two gentlemen will sign them. And I have here in the file, the agreement to provide budget technical assistance for training and compliance.
I'll make the motion to enter the contract with AIC.
Okay.
Let's see. Amount of that contract, what's the contract price for the five thousand?
Yes.
It is five thousand, yes.
And how many years have we done that?
Once.
Just once before?
Yeah. I think it helped out a lot, too.
But it helps. I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm just looking at it here just a little bit to make sure that I stand it all on it. If anybody in the audience or even the patient wants any information about what the scope of services is, I could give it. Does anybody like to hear those? Good. So, I think I have a motion and a second, don't I?
Yes.
So then I would call for a vote. All in favor of this AIC agreement for the price tag of, it's actually two payments, it's twenty-five hundred, so it's five thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We have our twenty-twenty paving contract.
I all on that, Bill?
Pardon me?
Note in your file on the paving contract.
Yeah, I'm not getting it. You're breaking up on me. What is it?
Say note.
There's a note in your file.
Look, there is. Paving contract. Paul wants a table, okay.
Motion to table, table. Paving contract.
Right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Evidently, Paul feels like that we, that he hasn't adequately reviewed them yet or had time to, and that we have time to do that. So, we have a motion and a second for tabling the paving contract. Is that until next time, Steve, until next meeting, second meeting of June?
Yeah, sure. Ask for Paul's request.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Lauren?
That's fine.
Okay, then I'd call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay. We're down to any other essential business. Excuse me. Do either of you have something you need to bring up?
I do have a question from the group chat, and it was wanting to know what PPE means. It means payroll. Payroll ending date. That's what it means.
Personnel, personnel payroll ending date, right? Something like that. I don't know if that's right or not.
I have it in front of me, so.
Okay, do you have any other questions that have come into you, Beth?
Not at this time.
Okay. Hopefully, we don't have to do this much longer. I'm hoping that we'll have our, the next meeting, let's just decide on that. Is there any reason we can't have a regular meeting in here with, providing that we have social distancing at the next meeting?
Well, Bill, I, I, this is Valerie.
Yes, please.
We've talked about our protocol. We were going to soft open the eighth for the public.
Yes.
And fully open the twenty-second.
Okay.
And with our number.
So, wait, okay, now. Okay, Steve, what was your comment there?
And if we can't open until the twenty-second, let's just move the next Commissioners' meeting to the twenty-second. I don't wanna do these videos then.
Well, I don't either. I don't know why we couldn't do that. Lauren, what do you think?
That's my problem with it. When I'm doing the social distancing, we'll get our numbers, increase our numbers.
Yeah, we could move down to the, to the, what was originally auditorium, and then the museum. We could move down to there and have lots of room for social distancing. Everybody that wants to get in could come in there and, and, and you look bored sitting in the back there of the Health Department.
Well, my concern is our numbers are going up due to the fact that we are having more testing, and now with the riotings going on downtown, people are not social distancing, and that's gonna cause their numbers to go up even more.
Okay.
Opened up all the graduation parties. So, you know, I'm worried about a surge. I'd like to stay the course, what we put in place to begin with, and open up on the twenty-second. Would be what we need to do courthouse, but.
I was thinking on the fifteenth, you were gonna decide whether we were opening up on the fifteenth or the twenty-second or not, so.
I think that's what we did decide to, yes.
Right. But if you were gonna have, if you were gonna have a meeting at that time, I thought that was the question, whether you could have it in the Zoom meetings or?
That is the question, Valerie.
The, yeah.
Okay, originally, we decided last, just as Beth just said, that we were going to have our meeting on the fifteenth and decide, make the final decision on the opening of the courthouse on the twenty-second. We were shooting for the date of the twenty-second. So, from that standpoint, it's a little tough to move the meeting to the twenty-second. I agree completely with Steve that I'm having these over the line here where, I don't know, just in listening to Valerie here, you know, it's breaking up on me in through there, and I have to piece in what she's, what she's saying to me. That's just the technical part of it. But maybe we ought to stay, as Valerie says, stay the course and do it, just have our meeting be this way one more time. What do you think, Steve?
Nah. Nah. Why can't we go ahead and vote on it and just go ahead and do the soft opening on as far as the opening on the twenty-second and have our meeting the same day?
Valerie, is there anything that, I mean, short of a, if we'd have a, just a real surge and terrible situation with, with more people in our community coming down with it, we can make an emergency decision about the twenty-second.
All right, then we can have a video then if we have to. Last option.
Yeah. And I have a question here from the comment of what about the drainage board meeting?
What you're asking me is, can you, you could have a meet on the fifteenth in-house? Is that what your question is?
No, the twenty-second.
And not? Okay, sorry. You guys were breaking up also. I'm not getting the question. So move your meeting to the twenty-second.
Yes.
But no meeting on the fifteenth?
No.
Correct, okay.
Then if it's an emergency outbreak again, then we can do the Zoom on the twenty-second.
Okay, yes, I think that's okay.
But when are you, if there is an emergency, how are you going to determine that without a meeting?
And we can put a motion and bill and decide if it's emergency or not.
Yeah, I think that'd be the only way we could do it, is the way we've done everything else, is that I just had to make a decision.
And we would just have to let Phil know what the numbers are and what the problem is. It could be the night before, you know?
Right, I would just have to be, I would just have to be in touch with, with you and the Health Department, Valerie, and decide if that's what's gonna be a prudent thing to do or not. If not, well, I'll have to just make a decision to postpone it for a week, and we'll see what happens. Is that all right, Lauren?
I kinda like doing the fifteen thing, making, we've got an extra week, we could postpone it at that time, but see where we are on the fifteenth, if our numbers do increase, we might wanna, as we stated originally, that's kinda what I thought our intention was. And I think that's, makes sense to me.
So you want to stick with?
Do that twenty-second meeting, that's almost in the month, but if you turn around July, we're having a meeting right where.
That makes sense. Let's just keep with the original plan.
Okay, so let me understand here. We're gonna have a meeting be, you know, this way on the fifteenth, and then we'll decide if the courthouse is gonna open on the twenty-second. But the next meeting will be by Zoom here, right?
Possibly the first meeting in July could be, let the open.
Yeah.
But if we open the courthouse on the twenty-second, we have an influx of people, I don't think that's a really great idea either.
Oh, you're probably right there, Lauren. Okay, I, I guess, I don't know, we need a motion to stay the course the way it was, but I wanna know that we're all in sync on that, that we're going to be, the proposal, the way I understand it now, is that we are going to have our meeting by Zoom on the fifteenth, and then we'll decide if the courthouse is gonna fully open on the twenty-second. Is that right?
Yes.
Right.
Are you all right with that, Steve?
Yeah.
We're staying as it is, right?
Staying as is.
Staying as is.
The course.
As much as Steve and I hate these meetings on Zoom, we're gonna do it, okay?
I don't like them either.
Well, I know you don't, Beth.
We have to do what we have to do.
Okay. I had a question pop up here that said, why was the trash transfer station delayed on opening? I believe it was because of illness or operator.
Yeah, yeah, health issues. We can't, we can't say anything about it.
Yeah, other than you need to have a day or so more on. So, it is open now, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Lauren, do you have anything else you wanna bring out?
Well, nothing business-wise. Just like, thank the employees, you know, through this whole thing we've never been through before, those who are serving, you know, each day and every day, taking their job serious, holding us over. So, the departments, I don't wanna name them all, 'cause I'd probably leave somebody out, but those who are taking care of the things in and around the county, I really appreciate that, and I think we need to give them big thank you.
I agree.
I think we all feel that way. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Beth has done a yeoman's work up here during the whole time, because she has been the lone one who has, of all the departments, that has just been here all the time, with the exception of the Health Department. They've been here the whole time, but they were, that was, that never closed. But of all the departments that closed, the office holder or department head would come in as needed. Beth was needed every day and was here. Thank you, Beth, for that. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Beth.
I appreciate the Health Department, all the work that they've done through this whole thing, because it's been, again, yeoman's work there, just nose to the grindstone in keeping it done. I have a couple other things I need to bring up. Our treasurer has been demanding for quite a while that we have a drop box outside for people who drop off their property tax into or drop off other mail for the courthouse rather than sending it through the mail. Our recorder has, last week, came in and talked to me, and we, you know, had a very nice request that we do the same. She says that she has people that need things recorded and need to drop things off, and we have talked about this before. And so, I asked, I asked Melinda, the treasurer, to come up with where the, where she could get such a drop box and how much it cost, and she came up with an all-weather drop box, and it has a price tag of twenty-four hundred, two thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty cents, which they have given a discount down to two thousand, forty-two dollars and sixty cents. So, her proposal for a drop box is for a two thousand, forty-two dollars and sixty cents. Now, I asked Keith, our custodian, to see what he could find, and I gave him a suggestion of that I don't see anything wrong with the drop boxes that the post office has. If you just drop, you know, a very similar one to what's over here on the corner. And he has done that and did a very good job of it, and has two different proposals of two different boxes that look, I don't know if I can get you this, where you can see them, they look just very post-boxy, post-office boxy. One of them is for a thousand, sixty-five dollars is the cost of it, and the other one is a little cheaper at nine sixty-seven. Not much difference. Now, it's about a hundred dollars difference. The, the one that's ten sixty-five, a hundred dollars more, says weather sealed outdoor collection box, and the one that's a hundred dollars cheaper. Does not say anything about being weather sealed. Now, it's got the same front flap thing on it and everything, just like we're accustomed to on post office boxes that we drop into. The reviews of both are very good. We have not decided if we want to do this.
I just don't want nothing mounted to the side of the courthouse.
I agree completely, and that's one of the first thing I said, is I don't want anything bolted to the courthouse, because we, us and our predecessors have done a very good job of preserving the integrity of the courthouse. And not having holes drilled in it everywhere and different things mounted to it. Over the last hundred years, we could have done a lot of damage that way, but we have. These are both standalone, the suggestion has been to put it on the circle driveway here to the west side of the courthouse. And they would probably require a pad to be poured just off the driveway, so they're not actually sitting up on the driveway, but they're not very big, they're. I don't see it, says length, okay, height's forty-seven inches, length's twenty-two inches, I think that's just square.
My concern would be with that, if people be driving through our circle driveway all the time, we have a chance of somebody actually hitting one of our buildings or tearing up our yard in the courthouse when they drive up to put their thing in there. I'd rather like to mount it on the north end, somewhere in that area where they have to actually.
Maybe just on the sidewalk out there?
Yeah.
So they'd walk up to it rather than drive up to it.
Right.
I have a comment here from Joyce Yoder popping up, or from the health department, I don't know which this is from, it says, why don't, oh, I can see a giggle there from my wife, Ange. Says, why don't they go over and put a fifty cent stamp on it and drop it in at the post office, which is the first comment that I made about it, too. Did I lose something, Ben? Okay. I think that's a very good comment, too, is it? We can do it either way, it's up to what you guys think, Lauren, what do you think?
Well, I'm, I'm a US mail person, I mean, that's, that's why we do most of my business with taxes and stuff. I put a box, it's simple, you know, and I'll spend, feels twenty miles to the courthouse for me, so works good for me, but not so. I can, a lot of people like to hand deliver things, I understand that, too.
Look, we're going to an opening, so I think, I don't think, hopefully, we won't ever have this again, I'm still not in favor of a drop box. I know the recorders had a lot of people call me personally complaining about it, but I told them just to stick it in the mail, it's more safe that way.
Well, right now.
I still, I still like to table and think about it, and look at the options where we can put, I like that mailbox thing, but I want to see where we can actually mount it and make it safe, where normally you can just rip it out of the concrete, take. Plus, we're saving a thousand dollars. We still got a jail to build, we can talk about.
I just had a comment of someone saying that they needed a secure drop point, and please put up a drop box.
I have a comment, can I make a comment?
Sure, who's, who, Melinda, yes.
This is now, yeah, so I think the biggest deal with the drop box is we have a lot of farmers who have a lot of parcels, and so it's. It's a bigger mailing than just dropping an envelope, and, you know, for them, they may do, they have their good, my big envelopes, figure out what the postage was. But I think that's, that was a lot of it, was the call for the drop box, for the taxpayers who have a lot of parcels and had a big parcel to mail. So that was the big push.
I think that's a very good comment, because some of our agricultural people would have quite a stack of, of property tax pieces that they would have to be including in this. And they would get a pretty cumbersome envelope to do it, that'd be in a great big envelope that they put it in. Uh, this would not handle, I mean, I wouldn't want to be one who put cash in there and dropped it in. We, we have, there are quite a few people who like to come in and pay in cash, and. Cash online is a good thing, but that wouldn't be a wise thing, I don't think, to do, is to, to drop it in there and not, not be face-to-face paying cash.
Right, yeah, the, there would need to be, now, I haven't seen the examples that Keith has prepared for you, but I think it would need to be important that, number one, the slot is of sufficient size that could handle a larger envelope. Not just a regular, you know, mail, and also that it have signage that say no cash. And also important, because it will be standalone, that I'm assuming that it will not easily be mistaken for a US postal mailbox.
Yeah, we have to letter it up pretty good.
Yeah, well, my, my concern is, is who's going to be responsible for it, so if someone drops their money in this and the thing disappears, is the commissioners and the county going to be responsible for it? Or the two official workers is going to be responsible for it? And the cost of concrete and all that stuff to get it put in, so we're looking almost three or four thousand dollars for this drop box.
It's going to be significantly more than a thousand dollars the cost of it, because, like you say, of the installation of it, bowling it down tight, all that, and.
I think maybe we, I'm sorry, Bill, I think maybe we ought to table it with the mailbox that our custodian showed, and have him get further estimates on what it's going to cost to get it installed and how secure it's going to be.
What do you think, Lauren?
I definitely agree, you need to anchor real well. Yeah, it needs to be.
And I don't, as a commissioner, I don't want responsible for somebody's tax money laying out there if it comes up disappearing. With something secured outside.
Well, I guess, Steve, the only thing I would say to that is that there are an awful lot of courthouses around that have these kind of drop boxes, and they seem to work very well.
Okay.
If, most people would, again, if we say no cash, they're going to be putting in a check, and we, we could, be of the common or other ways, put out. If it's somebody drove away with a box, we could tell them, you know, stop paying on your check.
Yeah, but who we, how are we going to know who it was unless they call in and say, hey, my taxes weren't paid?
Yeah, well, we wouldn't know.
Yeah, we wouldn't know.
Nobody would know who, who was in that box when it disappeared.
Then somebody can just say, hey, my taxes were in there, I put them in there, then they're going to get free taxes for the year.
Okay, well, I have another comment, Steve, to address that.
Okay.
Those calls where people mail them, so, I mean, that is, it's feeling far between, of course, but just because someone says that they mailed it or put it in a drop box, if it's not there, it's not there. So I don't see that as an issue.
Well, that's all, not us.
I'm sorry, got distracted by someone at the window. Now I lost my train of thought, sorry. What was your other concern, Steve?
I mean, if it's mailed by the post office, it falls on the post office, not us.
Oh, that was it, so I think there was a large number of complaints that we didn't have a drop box, because there's a large number of taxpayers who do not trust the US mail service. And I, I can tell you that I can't blame them, because a lot of things get lost in the US Postal Service. Ever since they routed, they started routing all mail down to the huge fort in Indianapolis. So that's why we have so many people every year who want to bring their taxes in person to the treasurer's office, because they just simply don't trust the US Postal Service. And I can't blame.
Well, if it wasn't in this COVID nineteen thing, I don't think we'd have an issue with a drop box.
That's true, and, but who's to say? Who's to say that this COVID nineteen or some other virus is going to happen, isn't going to happen again? And you don't want to wait until that happens to have this need rising in.
Well, I'm still going to make a motion to table it to get a final price. I'm still not happy with it, but I'm not against it either, so.
Lauren?
I think, I think that's good to make sure you have all the numbers and every, every cost included, I think that's pretty.
I, I agree with that, we need to get the numbers on installation also, and see if there's any other options out there as far as a box goes. I think it does need to be on the drive, circle drive, I think it needs to be probably located off the walk, so it's not maybe mistaken for a post office mail. I think it can be done easily, just get a good foundation for something, somebody can't lift it out and pull it out, have it secure.
Lauren, you seconding the motion, Lauren?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, if that's a motion, yeah.
Okay, yeah, Steve, we're looking for. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second now to, to continue research on this until we find out the exact cost or as close as we can to the actual cost of the box and the installation of it. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would call for a vote then, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, aye. We will, I will be talking to Keith and find out what he has to say about installing it. If he does not want to do it, we'll have to find someone else who would install it for us, right?
Correct.
All right, I'll set that aside. Now, we have another situation that I need to bring up to you, both of you, and that is. We have, again, from our treasurer, we have some. Well, I want to read the email from her, so that you understand completely what I'm talking, going to be talking about. This is from Melinda Ross, and it was sent out to, looks like just about all the departments and a lot of the people. And it's concerning our insurance, the health insurance that our, our people, that we provide. Says, please share this with employees who do not have access to email. You may or may not know, but earlier this month, our commissioners voted to renew our current health plan for another year. In parentheses, I hope and pray that that contract renewal has, is not signed yet. End of parentheses. I think it is time for the voters of Carroll County to be told how insignificant our commissioners feel about this hardship that has been placed on county employees for the past five years. Hospitals are no longer just writing things off, balance bills are going to collections, this is not an, an acceptable health insurance plan for hard-working Carroll County employees. A comment was made in the May fourth commissioners' meeting about negotiating a contract with one of the hospitals, that isn't realistic at all. Cass County has the same plan, but they do have a contract with the Cass County Memorial Hospital, but that contract was in place before they entered into this same plan. The hospitals in Lafayette are not going to negotiate. We had a great response from the health insurance surveys, but apparently that wasn't loud enough to convince our commissioners, who have other health insurance coverage, to act. I need to hear from everyone who has an account and collection because of this plan, I know I'm not the only one. I, I guess I need to say that I am very offended by this, with the, the part that really offends me is the part about. I think it's time for the voters of Carroll County to know how insignificant our commissioners feel about this hardship. I don't feel anything about our employees as insignificant. I would point out that it was our employees who, the last time, picked this plan, because we turned it over to them in a committee that represented many of the departments. And they did a very thorough job, I think, of looking at all the different plans and the money that was allocated via the council, that's the big factor there, is the council has told us how much money they're going to put into this. So we can't spend more than we are.